Good evening. It's May 20, 2025, and you're at the Stanislaus County Board Room for our meeting, starting now just a little bit after 6:30. We're going to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance, and if you please remain standing for invocation by Pastor Lance Laow from Neighborhood Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we thank you today for our community. Thank you for these leaders and these council members who help steward it. Lord, bless them and their families. We ask you today for wisdom for the season and situations that we are facing in this season. May this board have the ability to govern with wisdom beyond themselves. Give them your wisdom for every situation that requires their oversight. Lord, we also ask you for unity. Lord, you tell us that a house divided cannot stand, so help us work together, partner in places that we have agreement and have grace for one another where we have differences. May we stand united against things that would bring harm to our community and its residents. Lord, lastly, we pray for your blessing and your favor as we serve one another. Learning to love our neighbor as ourselves, help us love others the way that you have loved us. We pray all these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. First up is a presentation, commendations for the 2025 Stanislaus County Outstanding Senior Citizens of the Year in celebration of Older Americans Month. And up is President Martha Martin from our Commission on Aging. Thanks for being here. Martha, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Supervisor Condon and Commission members, Supervisor members. During May, the nation observes Older Americans Month. Tonight, the Board of Supervisors recognizes the contributions of five outstanding senior volunteers, representing one from each supervisory district. Words such as dedication, commitment, perseverance, taken out of context, hold little meaning, but taken together, they represent the essence of who these outstanding seniors are. Now, senior can have a connotation of many different meanings. For one, it conveys the image of a high school or college senior about to embark on life stage. Senior also means a different age group, 60 and over, and sometimes a lot older. Like any graduating class, some seniors retire from seeking new opportunities and rest on their laurels. But thousands of others, like these five here, they stride forward. These seniors return to their community as a volunteer, mentor, and wizened team player and leader. They have matriculated, not needing a cap and gown, for they are clothed with the experiences, some good, uplifting, some just as soon forgotten. Their majors include degrees in compassion, vision, strength of character, acceptance of others different than they, and wisdom. These seniors are philanthropists, literally and figuratively, assets to their families, neighborhoods, and communities. They give of themselves, proving their net worth. The return on equity is a blessing to the communities in which they live and serve. So, caps off. Bottom line, we recognize, we appreciate, applaud, and are indebted to these seasoned veterans of life. And it is with great, great pleasure I am able to introduce these to the board as well as to our community at large. All right. Our very first one from Supervisors District Three, Terry Withrup, is Jennifer Mullen. Mrs. Mullen, would you come on up here, please?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, first off, we start with, usually think we go in order here in District One, but I always want to go first because I want to get everything said before everybody else already says it, so I get a chance. And the other thing, just real quick, Jennifer, to say, and we talked about this for a second, you know, when I saw that you were the one who was picked here, and I was thinking, but you're not a senior, you know? And then I'm thinking, but then I started saying, well, I'm, but we're probably both seniors, I think. We just don't think that in our own mind, yeah. So, just a few things I want to mention, and I don't want to let you kind of talk. So, first, congratulations. And just kind of looking back at the things that you've been involved in here, you've been the former Executive Director of Modesto Convention Visitor Center back in the day. I'm not, I won't ask you when that was, but that was a past service you did. During COVID, you were very much involved out at Salida, I know at the library out there, working with the county health out there during COVID, and also at the King Kennedy Center. You were very involved in that, too, helping individuals with food and things like that during, as we were all were going through that time that we don't want to think about again, yeah. Other things that you're currently involved in, City of Modesto projects that you're working on still, I know Parade of Lights, Rocking Christmas Celebration Downtown Modesto stuff going on that you've been involved and done, Spirit of Giving Fun Run and Love Modesto Projects, also stuff that you've worked on. And then also, what it talks about here a little bit that I had no idea, was you have an elderly friend that you pretty much just take care of her, it sounds like. It sounds like you go across town to help her and are there for her when probably nobody else is. And so, and kind of the theme that I see, you know, as I went through all these different things that you're involved in graffiti, you're involved in the museum, see, I'm going to get in trouble if I don't say that, yeah, the graffiti museum out there, and I know you, like, 40 hours a week at least that you work out there.
We all do.
Yeah, so very much appreciate that. But the words that kind of stand out here as describing the stuff that you're doing is selflessness and compassion. And so, it's what it takes to be somebody like you, right? You give of yourself, you're self-giving, not self-serving. And we just, our community doesn't survive without people like you, without doing the things that you do. We're all busy in our day-to-day stuff. We're all swamped with our, with our own families, our kids, our parents, or whatever the case may be. And, but it takes us to reach outside of ourselves and to help others who maybe don't have, you know, the family members to help them. And there's so many like that in our community. So, we very much appreciate you and everything that you do. And we just want to congratulate you on being the Senior of the Year, one of the, one of the seniors of the year here, from District Three at least. And I'm going to give you a chance to talk here and tell us a little bit more.
Thank you so very much.
I told Jennifer she's got about 30 minutes to talk here.
Oh, I'll try my best to get it done in 30. No.
Well, good evening, and thank you very much again, Supervisor Withrup. I really appreciate it. I would like to express my very sincere gratitude to you, the Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors, for this incredible honor. Receiving this award means so very much to me. I'm very humbled and recognized, to be recognized for volunteer work. Plus, I'm really honored to be here tonight with this amazing group of other seniors that are being recognized. So, congratulations to all of you. And I would like to thank Mr. Doug Newton. He is actually the one who nominated me, and it was a surprise to me, I might add. But Doug Newton himself is a very amazing volunteer in our community as well. So, thanks, I guess, Doug Newton. No, thank you, Mr. Newton. I appreciate that. So, I feel very fortunate to be part of an amazing service club, the North Modesto Kiwanis, who do so much for the children of our community. One such event is coming up actually quite soon, the North Modesto Kiwanis Parade, Car Show, and Festival is June 6, 7, and 8 in Modesto at the MJC Campus. So, I'd encourage everyone to come and join. It's a real family fun event. We appreciate that. North Modesto Kiwanis has made me, made my life richer to serve with volunteers, with such like-minded people. And thank you very much to the Kiwanis that are here tonight. Also, I'm incredibly grateful for the opportunity to work alongside such dedicated and passionate individuals at the Graffiti Classic Car Museum, which is definitely on its way to truly becoming a world-class tourism destination that will benefit and enrich not only Modesto, but all the residents and businesses in Stanislaus County. The graffiti museum is an all-volunteer organization, and again, I'd like to recognize and thank the members who have joined me tonight for their support and their continued hard work to make this great museum happen. And of course, you all know this, so I don't have to say it, but I would encourage everyone to get involved in volunteering, even doing a small task. It allows you to connect with your community and helps make Stanislaus County the best it can be. Again, a very heartfelt thank you for this special acknowledgement. I'm honored and humbled to receive this recognition. And thank you very much again to the Graffiti Classic Car Museum and the Kiwanis for being here. And most importantly, thank you, Board of Supervisors, for all that you do to make our county amazing. Thank you.
All righty, absolutely.
Thank you.
Our second honoree this evening is from Oakdale, Ms. Arlene Halford. And Supervisor Buck Condon is going to be doing the honors, recognizing her. Mrs. Halford?
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight, Arlene. The Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors proudly recognize Ms. Arlene Halford as the 2025 Outstanding Senior Citizen for District One, honoring her decades of unwavering volunteer service and dedication to her community. And her community crosses county lines. It's not just specifically here in Stanislaus County. You've done a lot of work in Amador County, too, where you worked in the banking system for three decades and always had time to volunteer within your community. And before you left Amador, you came here to Stanislaus County, but before you left, you started, Arlene and her sister co-founded the Murphy's Thrift Shop, and the profits from the shop continue to this day to support not only senior center programs at Murphy's, but also employees, several locals. Isn't that right? And, you know, that's just great that you volunteered at the senior center as the activity coordinator. That's right. And then you, then after leaving there, you went to the Amador Sheriff's Office to volunteer there at the Amador, oh, got offline here, sorry about that, Sheriff's Department for Amador County, the Lifeline Program. And during that time, and if you look in your resolution, there's a little miscommunication there about, maybe as she was at the desk.
You're not going to talk about that, are you?
Yeah, absolutely, I am.
I can't say my words clearly.
That's because we misunderstood you. There was something in there about somebody bringing in a bomb and putting it on her desk, so she had to call authority, the other authorities to come and look at it. But it wasn't a bomb. It was a bong.
I knew the young people would laugh at that. I thought it was a kind of a fancy lamp.
That's great stuff. You also volunteered at the California State Ombudsman, caring for our most vulnerable and looking out for their needs. So, when you moved to Stanislaus County, it just so happened that you were having lunch at Lawmore Nita, right across the parking lot from our Veterans Center. And you've always admired those who have served our country, and your late husband served. After moving to Stanislaus County, the opportunity presented itself there right to you. And you always have the warm welcomes right there at the Veterans Center, welcoming whoever comes in through the door. And everybody recognizes you, and you usually know their name. From her warm personal greetings at the Stanislaus County Veterans Center to her impactful roles in hospice care, senior programs, and public safety, Ms. Halford has exemplified compassion, leadership, and tireless civic engagement. Her legacy of kindness, mentorship, service continues to enrich lives and inspire those around her. Arlene is the proud mother of three children, grandmother to seven children, and great-grandmother to two.
Twelve.
Was that another missing? Okay. The Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors does hereby thank Ms. Arlene Halford for her exceptional contributions to the Stanislaus County and congratulates her for being the 2025 Outstanding Senior Citizen.
Thank you. Thank you very much. This was a great honor. I just can't tell you how I feel about it, but it was a wonderful honor. I don't want to thank him, my sponsor, who got me into this. But it's great. I've only been in Modesto for about six years now, but I've enjoyed every minute of it. And finding the Veterans Center was really something that touched my heart, because our vets, so many of our vets are senior vets, they have no one. They have no place to go, nothing to do. And we provide so many nice things for them at the Veterans Center. And I'm just thankful for it, able to be there. And I want to also thank God, because I've had 89 years of good health. I've been able to do these things. I'm slowing down now, but, you know, whatever. But I just, I don't take any of it for granted. And I thank everybody. I thank you all for being here. And thank you very much.
Our next recipient is from Supervisors District Two, Mr. Greg Baba is from Turlock. And recognizing him this evening will be our Supervisor, Vito Chiesa.
Thank you very much. Could you hear me? Hello, hello, hello? Gotcha. Okay, so, I saw everyone laughing, so I'm still trying to figure out what a bong is. So, I don't know, something's funny. Always great to be here. So, I want you to know that we usually get notification on who our Senior of the Year is, maybe about a week and a half before it shows up. And about 50% of the time, I know someone, I know the person. About 50% of the time, I don't know. And the question's always asked, do you know this person? Hey, Charlie, how are you? And I said, I know this, this man. So, I'm going to digress really quickly before I get into the conversation. So, I've told stories about my dad. I always like to talk about him coming from Italy, from this little town called Sabinyashi, kind of in the Genoa area. And the Baba family was from Dover Superior. It's got an Italian pronunciation, Dover Superior, or something like that. And so, that's where the Baba family is. I, today I got on Google Earth. It's three miles from my dad's village. And so, then in Houston, the Baba family is .54 miles. I checked that this morning. So, we grew up, although you graduated 1970-ish, right? And I'm 82, so we're a little bit apart. But his little brother was around my age. But amazing how you travel across the world, and it's so, it's done in so many, you know, we're a melting pot for a reason, and people tend to consolidate with the same nationality. Something about the Baba family that sticks in my mind, before I get to Greg, again, you guys, give me just, just a second. My dad was the hardest worker I had ever met in my entire life. I still say that to this day. And he says, you have no idea how hard the Baba brothers, which was his dad, Pete, John, Aldo, and Ralph, the people worked tirelessly. He was amazed. And so, they lived close. Some of them lived in Modesto, but they had a ranch right there on John Fox Road. And so, that's what he was born out of. That'll give you an idea of when I go through his story. So, Greg Baba is an avid volunteer with the United Samaritans Foundation. He volunteers with the United Samaritans, preparing emergency food through the community needs for immediate nutrition. Something, there's a line in here that I highlighted, I highlight a lot of things, but I think it is the most important. Whereas Mr. Baba is a role model and leads with integrity and makes those around him want to do better, his ability to think critically, act civilly, and always listen are some of his admirable traits. So he has his lovely family with him here today, his wife, he does have four children, seven grandchildren. And so we are, I feel blessed to have you up here as my Senior of the Year. Having known you, it's always nice when you have someone that you know personally how committed you are to the community, how committed you are to God, and how committed you have been to We Care, serving those that haven't had the same opportunities that you and I have had. So congratulations on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, Greg.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Vito. I don't have a lot to say. I'm just sort of stunned. I do want to thank you, and I want to thank the rest of the Board of Supervisors for Stanislaus County. You guys do an outstanding job, and really appreciate, really humbled by this honor. I guess the only thing I'd say, everything I do, I enjoy, and I get so much out of it. And I want to thank Linda Murphy-Ghene, my boss, who is the head of United Samaritans, which does an absolutely wonderful job of feeding those less fortunate in this county. And they're just outstanding, and it's such a pleasure to work with them. I just say this to those who are younger than me, which most of you are in this audience, don't wait till you're older to do service. There's nothing more rewarding than there is doing things for your fellow man. And I would encourage everybody to find some opportunity to do good things. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Well, I'm sure you're thinking, it's going to be hard to beat the three that you've just heard about, but we have another outstanding senior citizen from District Four, Ms. Denise Norrell. And recognizing her is going to be Supervisor Manny Graywall.
Good afternoon, everyone. Denise, when I saw your name, I was like, you know, you just know sometimes when you see it like Vito said, when you get the, who your senior citizen for that district is, you know and see if, you know, you've ever crossed paths with them. While with Denise, I think we spent like, two Wednesdays ago, we got to spend that. I mean, we were at the League of Women Motorcycle, so we could probably have been somewhere else, it would have been, but it was still very fun. But Denise has really just carried the legacy of the library. And as I speak on everything she's been involved in, I think the kind of the main thing that has really driven her passion is for learning, is for helping the community, and her latest endeavor, so I am going to digress a little bit on what you will see at the library, the upgrades that will be coming within the next couple of years. And when you see or enjoy those upgrades to the library, this is the person you have to thank for. So we received a grant, and then the state matched that grant, and we were able to upgrade the Modesto Library, which we started, I want to say, a couple months ago. But Denise was like, no, we need something better for our community. So she convinced her board, took the lead to raise an additional $3 million, which was, I'll be honest with you Denise, when I heard it first time, I think all the board members were like, you know, that's a lot of money. But like in eight months, Denise like, check, we're done, 3 million raised, this is what we want to do with the money. And, you know, I'm going to say it in my comments that have been written, but it was her leadership that allowed for that. It's taken the library that was going to be still a great asset to the community and just making it better, not settling for, you know, just average or mediocre, but making something that's going to be an experience for the community for years to come. So that was her latest endeavor, the lifelong legacy campaign, raised $3 million to bring the library to a level of excellence. And so I'm going to use that word to kind of carry the narrative. I don't think Denise does anything unless she excels at it, and that shows with all the volunteerism she's done in the community. As a tutor for adults for the Stanislaus Literary Center for Learning Quest, Karen Williams, the executive director, said, if it wasn't for Mrs. Norrell, I can honestly say we would not have launched Kids Quest when we did without Denise. She convinced me that as a volunteer for 10 to 15 hours a week, it could be done. So she recruited 20 adults as tutors, with a similar number of children to be tutored. And after a year, she convinced me to hire a replacement to run the program. Currently Denise helps the program and tutors both dyslexic children and adults. Mrs. Norrell is dedicated to making the community a better place. She goes by this quote with the quote of President John F. Kennedy, "One person can make a difference, and everyone should try." Ms. Norrell, Denise, has been married to Dave for 49 years. All right, well, we want to make sure you make it to 50, and we'll give you a shout out. But 49 years is pretty impressive, pretty impressive, pretty impressive. And so.
There he is.
Hi, Dave. I really wanted to see him. But again, just that volunteerism, having that passion, not settling for just mediocrity, but making our community and letting it excel in many, many ways. This wouldn't be possible without the volunteerism that you and the leadership you've shown in the last two years. I know it's not easy asking for money. Library is always, I get one of the better causes to ask for, because I think everybody has children, teenagers, adults, seniors, all appreciate the library, but still, taking on an endeavor where you're trying to raise $3 million, it really takes a special skillset. And we thank you so much for that. And so without, you know, without you, this program or this project would not be possible. So deservedly so, you're Stanislaus County's District Four Senior of the Year. Couldn't have gone to someone better.
When I first retired, a dear friend of mine said, here's my advice to you. She said, don't say yes to anything during the first year. She said, take some time and think about it. Well, I completely ignored her, and I said yes to everything the first year, which was kind of overwhelming. So my advice to you folks who are considering volunteerism, pick something that you're passionate about. In my case, it was literacy and reading. And so when opportunities came by to serve, if it had to do with teaching someone to read or enhancing their ability to enjoy a library, et cetera, then I try to say yes whenever I can, and other things as well. So I want to thank the board and all of you for your recognition. And also, I just need to correct one thing. I was only one person in that huge effort. Our outstanding county librarian, Sarah Denton, has been a big help with that. You folks with contributing money, our community volunteers who helped to raise that money, the heavy hitters who helped to bring that home. So again, thank you very much. I'm very honored and humbled. Thanks.
Thank you very much. This was a great honor. I just can't tell you how I feel about it, but it was a wonderful honor. And I want to thank him, my sponsor, who got me into this. But it's great. I've only been in Modesto for about six years now, but I've enjoyed every minute of it. And finding the Veterans Center was really something that touched my heart, because our vets, so many of our vets are senior vets, they have no one. They have no place to go, nothing to do. And we provide so many nice things for them at the Veterans Center. And I'm just thankful for it, able to be there. And I want to also thank God, because I've had 89 years of good health, I've been able to do these things. I'm slowing down now, but, you know, whatever. But I just, I don't take any of it for granted. And I thank everybody, and thank you all for being here. And thank you very much. I waited all day for this. Our next recipient is from Supervisor of District Two, Mr. Greg Baba is from Turlock. And recognizing him this evening will be our Supervisor Vito Chiesa.
Thank you very much. Did you hear me? Hello? Hello? Gotcha. Okay, so I saw everyone laughing, so I'm still trying to figure out what a bong is. I don't know, something's funny. Always great to be here. So I want you to know that we usually get notification on who our Senior of the Year is, maybe about a week and a half before it shows up. And about 50% of the time, I know someone, I know the person, and about 50% of the time I don't know. And the question's always asked, do you know this person? Hey, Charlie, how are you? And I said, I know this man. So I'm going to digress really quickly before I get into the conversation. So I've told stories about my dad. I always like to talk about him coming from Italy, from this little town called Salvi Nasi, kind of in the Genoa area. And the Baba family was from Dover Superior. It's got an Italian pronunciation, Dover Sapirore or something like that. And so that's where the Baba family is. Today I got on Google Earth, it's three miles from my dad's village. And so then in Houston, the Baba family is .54 miles. I checked that this morning. So we grew up, although you graduated 1970-ish, right? And I'm 82, so we're a little bit apart, but his little brother was around my age. But amazing how you travel across the world, and it's so, it's done in so many, you know, we're a melting pot for a reason, and people tend to consolidate with the same nationality. Something about the Baba family that sticks in my mind, before I get to Greg again, you guys, give me just a second. My dad was the hardest worker I'd ever met in my entire life. I still say that to this day. And he says, you have no idea how hard the Baba brothers, which was his dad Pete, John, Aldo, and Ralph, the people worked tirelessly. He was amazed. And so they lived close. Some of them lived in Modesto, but they had a ranch right there on John Fox Road. And so that's what he was born out of. That'll give you an idea of when I go through his story. So Greg Baba is an avid volunteer with the United Samaritans Foundation. He volunteers with the United Samaritans, preparing emergency food through the community needs for immediate nutrition. His boss, where's Linda? She was here. I'm sorry, she's in the back. So she wrote a few things about him, but his infectious positivity brightens the day for all of those who are around him. He fosters a collaborative spirit among the volunteers, and his enthusiasm makes even the most challenging tasks more manageable and enjoyable. If you've ever been around Greg, I've been around him, see this, he's got a smile all the time. You cannot keep the man down. It is truly infectious, and we're lucky to have you in our presence here, being honored today. But really, all down in the Turlock area, we feel exceptionally lucky to have you, just all the good you do. He volunteers with his church and also as a part of We Care. We Care's been in the news recently, because they didn't take some money, but it is a shelter for 48, right, 48, 49 individual males. And pretty important in that arena. And so Greg has been instrumental in helping out in the We Care facility as well as United Samaritans. He's got a heart of service. Terry, like he said, he wants to speak first all the time, because we talk about, when you listen to these stories, the people are servants of the community. And ask Greg if he's getting paid, and he's getting paid through the smiles he receives back. Something, there's a line in here that I highlighted, I highlight a lot of things, but I think it is the most important. Whereas Mr. Baba is a role model and leads with integrity and makes those around him want to do better, his ability to think critically, act civilly, and always listen are some of his admirable traits. So he has his lovely family with him here today, his wife, he does have four children, seven grandchildren. And so we are, I feel blessed to have you up here as my Senior of the Year. Having known you, it's always nice when you have someone that you know personally how committed you are to the community, how committed you are to God, and how committed you have been to We Care, serving those that haven't had the same opportunities that you and I have had. So congratulations on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, Greg.
Thank you very much, Vito. I don't have a lot to say. I'm just sort of stunned. I do want to thank you, and I want to thank the rest of the Board of Supervisors for Stanislaus County. You guys do an outstanding job, and really appreciate, really humbled by this honor. I guess the only thing I'd say, everything I do, I enjoy, and I get so much out of it. And I want to thank Linda Murphy-Ghene, my boss, who is the head of United Samaritans, which does an absolutely wonderful job of feeding those less fortunate in this county. And they're just outstanding, and it's such a pleasure to work with them. I just say this to those who are younger than me, which most of you are in this audience, don't wait till you're older to do service. There's nothing more rewarding than there is doing things for your fellow man. And I would encourage everybody to find some opportunity to do good things. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Well, I'm sure you're thinking, it's going to be hard to beat the three that you've just heard about, but we have another outstanding senior citizen from District Four, Ms. Denise Norrell. And recognizing her is going to be Supervisor Manny Graywall.
Good afternoon, everyone. Denise, when I saw your name, I was like, you know, you just know sometimes when you see it like Vito said, when you get the, who your senior citizen for that district is, you know and see if, you know, you've ever crossed paths with them. While with Denise, I think we spent like, two Wednesdays ago, we got to spend that. I mean, we were at the League of Women Motorcycle, so we could have probably been somewhere else, it would have been, but it was still very fun. But Denise has really just carried the legacy of the library. And as I speak on everything she's been involved in, I think the kind of the main thing that has really driven her passion is for learning, is for helping the community, and her latest endeavor, so I am going to digress a little bit on what you will see at the library, the upgrades that will be coming within the next couple of years. And when you see or enjoy those upgrades to the library, this is the person you have to thank for. So we received a grant, and then the state matched that grant, and we were able to upgrade the Modesto Library, which we started, I want to say, a couple months ago. But Denise was like, no, we need something better for our community. So she convinced her board, took the lead to raise an additional $3 million, which was, I'll be honest with you Denise, when I heard it first time, I think all the board members were like, you know, that's a lot of money. But like in eight months, Denise like, check, we're done, 3 million raised, this is what we want to do with the money. And, you know, I'm going to say it in my comments that have been written, but it was her leadership that allowed for that. It's taken the library that was going to be still a great asset to the community and just making it better, not settling for, you know, just average or mediocre, but making something that's going to be an experience for the community for years to come. So that was her latest endeavor, the Lifeline Legacy Campaign, raised $3 million to bring the library to a level of excellence. And so I'm going to use that word to kind of carry the narrative. I don't think Denise does anything unless she excels at it, and that shows with all the volunteerism she's done in the community. As a tutor for adults for the Stanislaus Literary Center for Learning Quest, Karen Williams, the executive director, said, if it wasn't for Mrs. Norrell, I can honestly say we would not have launched Kids Quest when we did without Denise. She convinced me that as a volunteer for 10 to 15 hours a week, it could be done. So she recruited 20 adults as tutors, with a similar number of children to be tutored. And after a year, she convinced me to hire a replacement to run the program. Currently Denise helps the program and tutors both dyslexic children and adults. Mrs. Norrell is dedicated to making the community a better place. She goes by this quote with the quote of President John F. Kennedy, "One person can make a difference, and everyone should try." Ms. Norrell, Denise, has been married to Dave for 49 years. All right, well, we want to make sure you make it to 50, and we'll give you a shout out. But 49 years is pretty impressive, pretty impressive, pretty impressive. And so.
There he is.
He's filming. He's back.
Hi, Dave. I really wanted to see him. But again, just that volunteerism, having that passion, not settling for just mediocrity, but making our community and letting it excel in many, many ways. This wouldn't be possible without the volunteerism that you and the leadership you've shown in the last two years. I know it's not easy asking for money. Library is always, I get one of the better causes to ask for, because I think everybody has children, teenagers, adults, seniors, all appreciate the library, but still, taking on an endeavor where you're trying to raise $3 million, it really takes a special skillset. And we thank you so much for that. And so without, you know, without you, this program or this project would not be possible. So deservedly so, you're Stanislaus County's District Four Senior of the Year. Couldn't have gone to someone better.
When I first retired, a dear friend of mine said, here's my advice to you. She said, don't say yes to anything during the first year. She said, take some time and think about it. Well, I completely ignored her, and I said yes to everything the first year, which was kind of overwhelming. So my advice to you folks who are considering volunteerism, pick something that you're passionate about. In my case, it was literacy and reading. And so when opportunities came by to serve, if it had to do with teaching someone to read or enhancing their ability to enjoy a library, et cetera, then I try to say yes whenever I can, and other things as well. So I want to thank the board and all of you for your recognition. And also, I just need to correct one thing. I was only one person in that huge effort. Our outstanding county librarian, Sarah Denton, has been a big help with that. You folks with contributing money, our community volunteers who helped to raise that money, the heavy hitters who helped to bring that home. So again, thank you very much. I'm very honored and humbled. Thanks.
Well, Denise, my favorite part, my favorite part, I dressed for the occasion, kind of wore the turban, kind of matched the haircut.
Thank you. Thanks. And last, but not least, from District Five, from Newman, we are recognizing Leveta Fresquez. And Leveta, Chance Condit, our supervisor from that district, is going to be giving the honors to you. Leveta?
Thank you so much. Hello. Thank you so very much. It's an honor and a pleasure to recognize such an outstanding community member, outstanding West Sider, and a fellow Newmanite. So we appreciate you being here, Leveta. I'm going to read just some of Leveta's contributions here from the resolution that we're presenting her tonight. So, "Mrs. Leveta Fresquez has shown great care, concern, and love to older adults through her many volunteer activities while encouraging her family and friends to join her in service,
activities while encouraging her family and friends to join her in service, servicing these individuals in her community on the West Side. She was the president of the Orestemba 50-plus club in Newman from 2017 to 2024. During the COVID outbreak, as she began delivering hot meals to older adults, she started by delivering to six local older adults and soon was delivering to 42 individuals, providing this service for three years. She trained 10 volunteers to help deliver warm meals through two routes, and because of her initiative, the West Side older adults now have a food delivery program. Her and her family have prepared and delivered Thanksgiving meals for older adults in Gustine, Newman, and Crowes Landing. Mrs. Fresquez and her family create fruit baskets to deliver to older adults during Easter as well. She understands the importance of community and the impact of a simple gesture on the lives of others. Her hard work helps foster sense of belonging and joy among older adults who may not have family nearby or the opportunity to celebrate the holidays. She even started bingo programs at the Bob McConnell Senior Center on the West Side as well as at the senior apartments, where she conducts holiday celebration and events for the residents. She has volunteered as a host and waitress for the West Side Theater for the last five years as well. Levede Fresquez often volunteers to take older adults shopping, to doctor's appointments, delivering food, and organizes enjoyable outings, including lunch and casino trips. In return, she receives the heartfelt smiles and warm hugs of those older adults who are deeply grateful for her thoughtful gestures. She recognizes her efforts provide them with a connection and support in combating loneliness. Her commitment to their well-being not only enriches their lives, but also highlights the profound impact of community service. Mrs. Levede Fresquez shares five children, 12 grandchildren, and one great-grandson with her husband of 40 years, Mr. Richard Gaden, who's here tonight and is a Vietnam veteran. They have lived in Newman for 35 years, and she has even worked for the Stanislaus County Tax Collectors Department for 15 years. So again, Levede, thank you so much for your outstanding service. I've had the pleasure of being on a couple of those food delivery routes. I know Ms. Rose Lee Hurst accompanied me on a couple of those as well. And just your connection to the elderly and your service of others goes without saying. We're very appreciative for your years of service. Thank you so much for everything you have done and for your exceptional contributions to Stanislaus County, and it is an honor to recognize you as District Five's outstanding senior citizen.
Thank you, Mr. Condit. Thank you to the board and to everybody that's here. I feel belittled compared to what all of you have done. There's nothing in comparison, but I've nothing major. I've just helped my fellow neighbors and friends and people that I would like to know and have gotten to know over the years. There's so many seniors out there that are lonely and desperate and need conversations. People, they love children. If you see somebody that's lonely and older, go and talk to them. And if you think time that you can help somebody, reach out, even if it's just to help them for that minute or two. Give them that time of day. The hug, the smile, the laughter that you're going to get from them is so far more rewarding than what you've given to them. You know, so I do it because I love to see them smile and be happy. And that's it. But I have nothing compared to what you guys have done. But thank you for the honor.
in Stanislaus County. Wow.
Just give a couple of minutes here, and then we'll move on to the next one. All right, next up, recognition of the 2025 Stanislaus County Recycling Poster Contest winners, Mitchell Maderos.
Yeah, all right. So tough act to follow. I got a fun one, too. So good evening, Chairman Condit, board members, CEO Hayes, council. So yeah, Mitch Maderos representing our Solid Waste Division today, Department of Environmental Resources, and it's my honor and privilege to present our 2025 poster contest winners. So 200 participants this year. We got 200 posters submitted. Those were all on display at our Corner Copia facility, and staff is encouraged to vote, and I'm presenting our favorites today are the winners with their award. So each one of them will get a certificate, and they'll also be published in our next year's calendar. So, and they get a cash award, so that's important, too. So this is our 21st year doing this. It's a really fun program. I think it kind of lifts spirits in the office, and it's, you know, fun for everybody involved. So very thankful to be a little small part of this. And before I get to the winners real quick, just want to acknowledge my partner, Janice McClendon, who has kept this tradition alive. Again, 21st year, and also Fidel Skynes being my safety net, while a couple of us were out of the office more recently. So again, we break the winners into four categories according to their age and grade. So I'm going to start with the kindergarten and first graders. I don't think I've seen Maria in the lobby, but if Maria Ibarra Santana's out there, or if anybody else that I think...
She's not here today.
No? Okay. Okay. But just anybody out there, if I say your name, if you want to come on out, we're going to do a photo after as well. So third place winner in arcade in first grade at Westport Elementary was Maria Ibarra Santana. Unfortunately, not here today. Second place winner from Vaughn Renner, Aldo Rodriguez Casaneda. Okay, but our first place winner is here. So from Westport Elementary, we've got Ariana Madrid. So Ariana, I think it's the little one in pink right there. Ariana, want to come up real quick? We got a certificate for you. And reminder to the artists, too, we're going to do a photo afterwards, so if you could hang out for a little bit.
Come on, let's do this.
So on to second and third grade. For our third place winner, we've got from Keys Elementary, Sofia Ambres.
Yes.
Yeah, congratulations. Okay, so second place winner, another Westport Elementary All right, Jose's, this is the second time winning already. So and our first place winner from the second and third grade group is from Grayson Elementary, we got Emilio Ramos. Okay, so now on to fourth and fifth grade. Third place, we have from Dina Bauer, Aileen Angeles, who I don't think was with us today, but Aileen, if you are up here, okay, cool. All right, so second place from Las Palmas Elementary, Naraya Valdespino. She is not here today, but we'll be presenting her award. And first place for fourth and fifth grade, we have Ruby Rutherford from De Niro Elementary. All right. And for our last category, sixth through eighth grade, third place, we have from De Niro Middle School, Juliette Condi. Second place is from Hickman Middle School, Blaine Hayes. All right, and our last first place winner in the sixth through eighth grade category from Creekside Middle School is Devin Quintero. All right. Yeah, so congratulations to the winners again. Look out for the calendar. The calendar will be out in the county offices and all the schools. Yeah, come on in, you guys.
Any family and friends, you're welcome to come down and take photos here. We'll take a few minutes to do that. Can I go Cookies and Punch, too? All right, I'm out of here. Great job, you guys. Good-looking posters. Way to go. Wish I could have been able to make pictures like that as a kid. There's no way.
I know one of you guys up here were keeping track of what district had the most winners.
I think one.
District Five takes, again, I think that's been a repeat.
Well, yeah, we consistently dominate in those categories. District Five.
May I ask the board for some additional funding for art classes in District Four?
I second that. All right, moving on. We're moving on to public comment. Public comment is a time for those in attendance to speak on items not already on today's agenda. Please state your name for the record. Direct all comments towards the dais, and so does fair for every speaker. Keep comments to the five-minute time limit. Now, the first up is Rod Olson.
Hello, Board, Chairman, Board members. Rod Olson with Crimson West Consulting on behalf in representing recology. As you know, recology over the last several years has awarded, instituted and awarded scholarships for high school students that were graduating and going off to college to further their education in agriculture. This is that night. We've had quite a lot of presentations tonight, so that's kind of fits the theme of the evening. This evening, we have Tim Hester, the general manager of the facility here, to introduce the students that are this year's recipients. So, Tim.
Good evening, Board members. We've been doing this for several years, and this is a chance for us to honor those students. These are some more seniors, a little bit different, but they are extraordinary students in Stanislaus County. We cherish those kids that want to continue their education in agriculture because that's what we do here. If you have been out to our accomplice facility out in Vernalis, you know, we love our farmers. That's what we do out there. So tonight, I'll keep it really short. We'll introduce the folks to you, and then we'll give them their cash tonight. We got a little bit of money for them. We were able to bump it up again this year. Inflation's going up, so everything, at least they can get a computer out of it or something. From Davis High School, we have Alisa Guerrero. She's going to be going to Fresno State. She's going to be studying ag business. From Turlock, we have Lexia Lopez. She's going to be going to Chico State studying ag science. From Gogori, Sean Sorrell, going to MJC with animal science is his specialty. From Enoch's, we got Tanya Camacho. She's going to Cal Poly Pomona, ag science. And Natalie Ivera is going to Patterson, she's from Patterson. She's going to MJC and ag education also. So again, great bunch of kids, extraordinary students. They do their thing. They enjoy ag. As you can see, most of them are all wearing their FFA jackets. Proud of these kids. They do a great job. So we want to honor them tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Congratulations to all of you. Thank you for choosing ag. Stanislaus County is an ag community, and we appreciate all your hard work and congratulate you. Come on up, and let's take a group picture. I know I had District One school in there. Anybody keeping track? All right, next up, soon as I get my glasses.
That was Tim.
That was Tim. They put in both. Malin Alley?
Good evening, Board members, citizens of county, of Stanislaus County, and everybody out here. And just want to mention, we stand with our farm workers. I just want to bring a subject near and dear to my heart that wasn't on the agenda, and it's having the police oversight out there in Patterson. The sheriffs need to be held accountable, especially when we have officers that suffer from post-traumatic stress disorder, PTSD. I don't know if anybody's familiar or educated what PTSD is. You know, our troops go through it, but if you look at the extensive history in the 1980s when women were sexually traumatized or abused, the research showed that it would manifest in smiles, sights, nightmares, cold sweats, and that's something that even a paramilitary organization like the sheriffs, law enforcement suffer from, SWAT team. And that's something that people don't speak about. And we need an oversight committee, especially when there's issues that happen over and over throughout a period of years, and we can't have an institution just police its own. That doesn't work that way. Citizens who are taxpayers are requesting and demanding, as taxpayers, as homeowners, as business owners, for there to be an oversight and that kind of behavior. Everybody's held to a standard, and the rules and law shouldn't bend for certain people. And that's an issue, right, that it's bigger than, I guess, even this conversation. It's a behavior, it's an attitude, it's an ideology and a rhetoric that people believe in, right? That's indoctrinated, and that we're the best, we can do whatever we want. And I think that's something that we need to really come to terms with when it comes to the oversight and having a committee oversight, civilian oversight. Make sure that even if they're undocumented or they don't have citizenship, that they're not going to be violated or beat up or threatened because of that. Because when big agriculture needs people, where do they go to get those servants to work the land? They go to Mexico. They get a guest program, and people from Mexico come here and do a lot of work in big agriculture, which is not only the industry that runs here in the San Juan King Valley, but also the prison complex industry that controls keeping people in line, like Tracy, like the safety center, like Corcoran, like Chowchilla. These are industries, and that's what they are. They're generating money and employment for certain people. And so we're asking for that consideration to start here with you, Board members, to have that consideration of putting something together for the people, the citizens, the taxpayers in Patterson, for them to have the right, just like Modesto does, that has a civilian oversight for these issues that reoccur, you know, for the accountability, you know, for everything that happens and stuff. And I believe that this is something strongly that needs to be acknowledged, right? Just like there's people that are awarded awards for the good times, for things, there's also these other issues that we know, it's scary to talk about, takes a lot of heart, nobility, and courage to come up here and dialogue, right, in an unbiased way and say, hey, this is an issue that needs to be rectified. This is an issue that needs to be acknowledged, right? And that's what this conversation's about, is for that consideration as a citizen, as a taxpayer, to have that acknowledged, and if it's feasible for it to be considered and put into play. And that's what we're asking for, right? I think that a lot of communities of color, for example, even in Modesto on the South Side, right, on Crowes Landing, could benefit from a park, could benefit from a cultural center. There's other cities in, throughout California, the Bay Area that have cultural centers and parks, and unfortunately, there's certain areas here in our county that don't have that, don't have a cultural center, don't have a park. They're heavily overpoliced, and it's, you know, easy to blame and say, well, it's this culture and this community when it's, you know, inappropriate that they're acting this way. But what is the county offering as far as resources and network to help and uplift and show compassion to that group, a group segment of individuals, right? And since I was, you know, a small kid in the 80s, I've never seen a park be built out there in South Modesto, right? And we're in 2025, and it's still the same, but we could have a McDonald's, we can have liquor stores, marijuana dispensaries throughout the county. You know what I mean? So, excuse me. I'm taking my time right now. I just don't want to be laughed at. I wouldn't do that to you. You know what I mean?
Sir, yeah. Thank you for your comments. Next up, Mr. Gonzalez.
Good evening, supervisors, the board members. I'm from District Five, from Mr. Chance's district. I'm here to voice out, echo up what the previous speaker said in regards to an independent board, citizen board meeting review for accountability for misconduct, you know, policy breakers on our police enforcement officers. Police officers or sheriffs, deputies, you know, should be well trusted out there on the course of their duty. We have respect for our deputies, but the problem now is that deputies don't seem to have a line of their boundaries. We had an incident that happened in April 1st on Deputy Helms. We see the pattern of, the pattern of how they behave when there is no eyes on them, you know? And fortunately, there was at that time on both sides of the story, civilians and officers. But what happens when all these incidents are off-camera, you know, and there is incidents that becomes a tragedy, you know? We have to have more accountability. If we're accountable for any petty infraction, speeding, or whatever, you know, there's policies for the people that work for us to hold them accountable for their wrongdoing. We're not perfect. It's not a perfect world. As a civilian, as a citizen, we might cross a red light, we might not do a full stop, and we're going to get a ticket for it if we get seen, right? We got to hold officers accountable for everything. I, there is a, I had in previous encounters with law enforcement, I've been harassed by law enforcement in the past in Patterson for holding a law enforcement in the past in Patterson for holding them accountable, speaking with the chief, trying to, you know, bridge the gaps between us, the citizens and our law officers so we can have, you know, more trust in them so we can have more accountability. So, so this independent citizen review will help out to have accountability for every officer that breaks their policy or use, overuses their duties, their uses force, you know, or violates their policies. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Milt Treewyler. Earlier this month, I took a road trip to Arizona to visit relatives in the Prescott area. Traveling south, I drove through the great agricultural farmland area of our San Juanquin Valley. One of the things I observed here was the mammoth structure called high-speed rail. Many resources and billions of dollars were poured into this worthless project because of lack of foresight and arrogance. How wasteful and how sad it is to see things like this. As I left Bakersfield and headed through the Tehachapi, I thought about the Garden of Eden we have here in Stanislaus County. Are we going to turn it into a food desert? I hope not. We have an intellect and we have choices and some people are choosing not to conserve the priceless resources we have here. We must be good stewards for our children and descendants since they cannot do this for themselves. They cannot do this for themselves because they're too young or they haven't been born yet. There is not one acre of farmland in some entire states and even countries as good as a farmland in the area near water, a riverbank, or the farmland in the area north of Turlock, or as the farmland in the areas all around Series, Houston, Modesto and unincorporated Salida. Stanislaus County's farmland can grow food for hundreds of years because of the soil and water we have in the TID and MID irrigation districts. In the climate we have here in our county, there is an abundance of poor soils and wastelands in California and our nation for developers to build houses on, like the Altamont Pass area or the area east of Oakdale. There's also large landmass areas west of Patterson along Interstate 5 and in the Fairfield area along Highway 12. We also have entire states of Arizona, Nevada, Utah and New Mexico for the developers to build on. We do not want to use up the resources that will be needed for our children and future generations so that they can have food and survive. We, as our children's ancestors, must work together to preserve this best farmland in the world that we have here in Stanislaus County. We're aware that for the next, over the next 14 years, California will need to fallow 900,000 acres of farmland in the San Juanquin Valley, south of Stanislaus County. There's just not enough water underground to irrigate it. However, here we have the Greater Don Pedro Dam for our water supply. By working together, our children and descendants will look back and thank us for stopping the sprawl of our Stanislaus County cities. Remember, the future of our children and descendants is our responsibility. As I return to our San Juanquin Valley, a week later, I passed the high-speed disaster again. My thoughts were, are we in Stanislaus County going to be just like these people and have a lack of foresight and be arrogant? Are we going to build houses and warehouses on the best farmland in the world? Our farm, our land areas in MID and TID districts are fully economically developed. They are producing food for our state and our nation. This plan will be able to produce food for our children, for future generations, for hundreds of years. Are we going to come to our senses and use our intellect for the survival of our children and descendants? Now is the time to shut this senseless growth down, freeze all city boundaries and build up and not out. We now know that high-speed rail was a stupid idea. We also know now that creating a food desert in Stanislaus County would be a stupid idea. God or nature, however you look at it, gave us brains to think with and use. Why do the squirrels gather nuts and the bees collect honey? Now is the time to start using our brains and be good ancestors for our children and our descendants. This is actually what it is all about. This is what it is all about. What is life about? You take care of your children and your descendants. There's just a lack of concern here of some people. We've got to stop that. We cannot continue to build on our agricultural land. There's not going to be any other agricultural land except what we have in Stanislaus County. It's going to be fallow, 800,000 acre, or 900,000 acres. We're reaching a point. It's going to come quickly. It's going to come more quickly. And who's going to suffer again? Our children and descendants who haven't even been born yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Treewyler. Next up, Mr. Evans.
Good morning, Board, or afternoon, evening this time. We got an evening one. Anyway, accountability and responsibility of the Sheriff's Department, as these guys are saying, we're going to go through a lot of changes. And accountability is, our Sheriff's Department needs more of a budget, but they need to put that budget into aligning these people to understand constitutional rights that people have when they're even making arrests or when they're taking a prisoner into their own jail. We're the county. When we bring a prisoner in, some of these city officers may just make this stuff up, may abuse that person, don't give him the rights. But we have to have oversight on that. For every city that's in our county, we need to oversight what our police officers are doing in those cities. That's where we're at. We're supposed to maintain our county. These guys here, they're right, you know? And the dispensaries, and Patterson's going through a lot of changes. It's probably had some of the worst officers that have come out of there and they wind up in Modesto's. That's where they wind up working, the city of Modesto, the same problem we got here. And Modesto, you can't make an arrest. They want this new bill to come out, AB 1333, called Run. Is that what we're supposed to do? Run if somebody attacks us or robs our house? Or if we try to defend ourselves? You know, we can't do that because then we'll be put into jail and we'll have no rights. And that's why oversight is very important. But the thing is, you've got to give that money to the Sheriff's Department and understand the training that they have to have, is abide by the constitutional rights, protect these people no matter what it is. Don't let the cities overrun you and say, oh, that city's out of control. We'll just accept that, whatever they say. There's facts to be found out, facts, as it states on the sheriffs. Secure health, ensure rights in fact-finding. That means the Constitution that that person has the right to. You can't just take it away from them and say, well, that guy's it. Otherwise, we're just back to witch hunts. Witch hunts. What good's that? And then we're spending pro bono, our poor attorneys that are prosecutors, we're giving them to the criminals. The criminals do what they call DARVA, reverse it around, next thing you know, the guy that owns the house who's trying to stop the burglar, he goes to jail and then he gets a pro bono attorney, your prosecutor, to prosecute the innocent man that's only protecting his rights. That's where capital or castle law comes in. We need that. We have to have that. I've been ripped off so many times on my piece of property, it's just amazing. And all you get is, well, write a list and give it to your insurance company. That's it. And nobody does anything. You could have the frigging number of the car that's out front, the license number, you could have a picture of the guy, it doesn't go any further. We have to protect our own grounds and you guys got to feel strong enough to turn around and make this man, the sheriff, do his job. Give him more money if he needs to know what's going on and tell him to stop it. And look at every report. If a report comes in from a city, it should turn around and go to the Sheriff's Department, he should be able to read that and see if there's any violation of constitutional rights against that person before they make an intake on him. And they should make sure that he's not harmed. Secure health, ensure rights in fact-finding. That's our sheriff. That's what it spells, that's what it is. Because otherwise, we're just going to be attacked by our own people that we pay for. And we're all stockholders. You don't see companies beating their stockholders up, you know, and saying, oh, it's okay. It's not okay. So if he wants more money, tell him to direct it in the right way. We don't need wave runners, we don't need gyrocopters flying around, we don't need helicopters. We need protection of our rights. And that's where it starts. And if the officer does something wrong, find the officer and then take him off, a month, no pay. That's what should be. Because that's what they're supposed to uphold. They take an oath on that. And they're the only ones that can protect us from the cities within ourselves. And if we don't do this and give them the technology they need to know, we just got a bunch of out-of-control cities doing whatever they want, open up dispensaries, give out drugs, here's a prescription for you, here, we'll start at 209, come in and pay 300 bucks and you can have as many as you want. We don't need that stuff. Go to doctor's hospital and they'll prescribe you some Vicodin, OxyContin, and why not have 578,000 prescriptions again in this county? More than men, women, children. Let's just let it go out of control. Let's charge that $10 for a joint because we're going to get back some tax money. Hell with that. That's creating crime, you know? And they're not turning around and making these officers responsible by oversight for a, there it is. Anyway, giving up our rights, we don't want to give up our rights. We want you guys to strengthen our rights and know that we feel strong.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
That somebody protects us.
Appreciate the comments. Okay. That is the last speaker card I have. Is anyone else out there that would like to make public comment on items that are not on the agenda? John?
Well, actually, I did fill one out for public comment, but I also filled one out for the agenda, an agenda item, so, but that's all good. My name's John Exmataka, I'm with Valley Improvement Projects and I'm also with the Grayson Neighborhood Council. I'm here tonight to ask this board and to encourage this board to look at a citizens' Oversight Review Board, similar to the one that the city of Modesto has with the Modesto Police Department. But part of that is also an independent auditor. They just came out with their report recently for the past year that has been enacted. And there were, I looked through most of it and there were a lot of great things that were mentioned that make it better for the community and better for the officers, for everybody all around. But what they look into too is adverse incidents and they have an independent auditor who, you know, comes up with, you know, what went down and from an independent view, not from the police, Sheriff's Department or Police Department and not from the victim, but somebody from the outside that is, understands the process. So I'm here to encourage that. I know in the city of Modesto, the city council had to get that going. I've heard this board say many times that the sheriff is an elected official, that you don't really have any control over what he does, but you do because you have a budget. And, you know, he looks to this board for money. And anytime there's money involved, you always have a say. And even if you're an elected official. And so I would just encourage that to happen. And I'll say one last thing. I just got back from a three-day trip to Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. And I went to a community response cohort there, which talked about, I know in this county, we have, what do they call it? The mental health workers that go out with the Sheriff's Department.
Chat.
Chat. We have, they have chat here. I went, it was in Allegheny County, which is 138 precincts down there. We toured the 911 dispatch center. They include all these different areas, they picked four areas, because it's such a huge area, they picked four areas that they focused with, that the, that the police departments were willing to work with them. And it's really a lot more intense than the chat program because it outlines specifically which calls that should be forwarded to, they call it the A-team, which calls should be forwarded to them and which ones require the police to be, take on first, and then they would come in afterwards. So it's a lot more detailed and a lot more, you know, plus other referral services after the fact. So at some time, you know, I would like to share that with you about that. But the issue tonight is a review, a citizen review board with an independent auditor. And I think that's the way that we improve our relationships. And, you know, I know the sheriff sits on that committee, so he's well aware of what I'm talking about. Because he's a member of that, of that, of that committee, as I would assume if the county started one, that the police chiefs, at least at Modesto, the bigger city, would probably be on that committee too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. Hey, and I apologize, I didn't get the, I didn't look at that box that was checked and I should have called you.
Oh, it's okay.
All right, any other speakers? Bianca.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Bianca Lopez, I'm co-founder of Valley Improvement Projects. It's been a good minute since I've come to the board meetings, but Valley Improvement Projects has been up to lots of new and exciting things. We have a team of 11 staff. Nine of them are full-time, so we're excited and you should be seeing a lot more of us from now on. But today, I am here to speak also in support of a civilian review board, a community review board, or a citizens' review board, which are very similar, whatever you call it. Does it matter? It's what we do with it that really matters. But we're asking the board to put this on an agenda so that you can have a discussion and a vote. We urge the board to place the creation of a civilian review board for the Sheriff's Department on a future agenda for an actual vote. We want to know where you stand. Thanks to AB 847, counties now have clear legal authority to establish these oversight boards with access to personnel records, subpoena power and the ability to conduct meaningful investigations. There's no longer a legal barrier, only a question of political will. So it's really up to you now. Sheriffs hold extraordinary power in our communities from running county jails to deciding who gets detained or referred to ICE, as we will learn later tonight. Yet, in many counties, there's no real independent mechanism to review complaints, track patterns of misconduct, to ensure accountability. A civilian review board helps fill the gap with transparency, public trust and community input. It's not an attack on law enforcement, it's a step toward fairness, oversight and rebuilding trust between our communities and the institutions meant to serve us, or them. We ask that you put this up for a vote, and if you choose not to act, we are fully prepared to bring this issue directly to the voters through a ballot initiative as allowed by law. And so we'd appreciate you to agendacize this discussion and take a vote so that we know exactly where you stand. And then if, and then if you vote no, then the people will take this to the ballot. And I am pretty confident that we will have a vote to pass a civilian review board for the sheriffs. As you heard, there's recent incidents and incidents that aren't accounted for, people don't tell their stories all the time. But we do get those stories told. They're not very good stories of police misconduct and over the use of excessive force. Sometimes they don't break a policy or a law, but they definitely break the trust of the community. And a civilian review board would help bring transparency and accountability and trust, bridging these two community and the agencies that are supposed to serve and protect us. So we ask you, Mr. Withrow, you know, in West Modesto, the civilian review board from the city of Modesto, they hold strong meetings there because people really care. It is an issue at the city of Modesto. Mr. Buck Condon, Chairman, I've reached out to you about misuse or excessive use of force in Riverbank. We know it happens in your district as well. Vito Queza, I've been mistreated by police in Waterford, and I can tell you that story at another time. Mr. Condon, you serve a lot of the unincorporated areas. Patterson, as I mentioned, on April 1st, there was a recent incident where a young man was tased and then threatened to be shot. That was an excessive use of force. The community does not feel safe, even when officers are on the field with guns. We are their targets. Racial profiling is well-known in Stanislaus County, even our previous sheriff has admitted to it. And I don't think that our current sheriff would deny it. We ask you to put this on the agenda so that we can have a vote. Mr. Grual, you are, I'm sure your people have reached out to you. I don't have examples for specific things that happened in your region, in your district, but I know they happen. And so- And so how do we get this on the agenda is is my question. And when can we get that on the agenda for a discussion and a vote so that the people know where you stand? Thank you.
Thank you, Bianca. Any other speakers like to make public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment, move on to consent calendar. I know we have Supervisor Chance Condon would like C1 ruled. And we have public comment on B1 and B2. So otherwise, take a motion to everything except.
B1, B2, and.
C1.
C1. Okay, motion to approve.
Second. Okay, I have a I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. On B1, Bianca?
Yes. I wanted to clarify on B1. It seems like we are back to increasing rates for waste pickup. If I wanted to get clarification, if I can, if that's what this agenda item means.
Rob?
Yeah.
Bianca, if you.
Yes.
Just meet up with Rob over there and then you have number two.
Yes. Okay, so for B2. So B2 here, I think I understand this one a little bit better than B1. But the this is basically increasing funding or the tipping fees at the landfill to increase staffing levels, purchase additional heavy equipment in order to properly manage the increased tonnage the department is receiving after the closure of the waste-to-energy facility. It states that the rate analysis factored in waste growth projections increase number of staffing, increase in operating hours, equipment needs, and capital improvements, among other factors. It acknowledges that our tipping fee is actually lower than the average rate for disposal of refusal in nearby counties. And then it also cites the board's priority of enhancing community infrastructure by making funds available to the Department of Environmental Resources Landfill Division. And so I have a couple of concerns. There is no mention of the funding, the money, the millions of dollars that we have back into our our budget from the closure of the incinerator. If I recall, the county was going to get three something million dollars and the city of Modesto, the other contracting community, was going to get a little bit over $4 million from the closure of the incinerator. There is nothing here about what we're actually going to do with our money, our money, to actually reduce what is going to the landfill. You're expecting an increase, but there is no plan to actually decrease what waste is going to the landfill. And on here, there is citing of the materials that go into the landfill. Garbage, paper, paper is compostable, should not be going in there, lumber that can be recycled, bottles, I'm not sure what kind of bottles, cans, recyclable, small dead household animals, I didn't know we did that at the landfill, household trash, which some folks in some jurisdictions don't have the privilege to separate their waste. And so green compost and recyclable materials are going to the landfill. Roofing tile, sheet rock, there's no plan on demolishing in a better and more effective way to that so that we can reuse some of these parts of buildings and homes when we demolish. So I'm really concerned specifically with the citing of only one of the board priorities, which is the enhancing community infrastructure. What about delivering efficient public services? Which the definition is effectively managing public resources and innovation. I don't see that in here. You're asking for more money or you're going to use and ask, charge for more money, which is on the tipping fee, which is not something I'm against with because that would actually deter people from taking things to the landfill. But I don't see where this public service is efficiently reducing the waste to the landfill. What about supporting a healthy community? We produce a lot of methane in the landfill and we should be reducing the methane that we produce and that we create in this landfill. But if our plans to develop a zero-waste plan are not part of this plan, we are failing and it is not efficient and it's a misuse of our time and our resources. I think I'm really just concerned about the lack of a zero-waste plan. We continue to have the Stanislaus County Waste Management Local Task Force meetings canceled, where community members can come to the table to have these conversations and ask questions and be a part of the solution. And we also have been asking the board members to reengage that local task force as a zero-waste task force so that jurisdictions that are much smaller, like Riverbank, who need some resources, can attain those resources through a local task force, which is what the county, we should be the glue for these smaller jurisdictions. So I'm really disappointed in seeing that we don't have a zero-waste plan and that we're not using our resources properly. And so I look forward to to that. I would just add one more thing, that if we're increasing rates, that these presentations and this public hearing should be presented to the communities in the community service districts where these rates are going to be increased significantly. Thank you.
Thank you, Bianca. All right. You can have a look on B1. B1 and 2.
Is it still open?
Yeah, absolutely. You want to make a comment? Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. Real briefly. Yeah, I just want to comment on the second one. You know, I'm a I've been for, I'm starting my second year a few months ago, being on the solid waste task board. We have yet to have a quorum. We were advocating for zero waste, to look at other ways of keeping, you know, stuff that didn't need to go to the landfill way before the incinerator even closed because we realized that once that incinerator was going to close, which we knew it was going to, that, you know, we didn't, we also did not want everything going to the landfill. And actually, Valley Improvement Project spent $10,000 of grant money to work, how much?
15.
15, okay, to work with Zero Waste USA to come up with an actual zero-waste plan for Stanislaus County. And what that plan said was that basically Stanislaus County is about halfway there, that the infrastructure that you have in place right now is not that bad. It just needs to be tightened up in various areas to make it good. And so with that being said, there were recommendations that were made in that plan. But there's been resistance even before the incinerator to have that discussion. And I don't know if that resistance was why all these meetings keep getting canceled. It's very frustrating. There's over 40 people on that task force and over a year and not one meeting. And now already this year, the last meeting was canceled too. So I'm really, really debating, do I even want to be a part of that any longer? You know, we're not doing nothing. I think you need to take a look at what is the purpose of that? Is the purpose of that for those people to meet separately amongst themselves without community input? Because I'll be honest with you, as a community member, that's the way it's it feels, you know? Because I found out some decisions were made that I wasn't a part of as a community member on that task force. So anyway, just food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rabin. Any others like to make comment? All right, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
B1, B2, motion to approve.
Second. I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Okay. Chance, C1.
See, I was just hoping for a general update regarding these two proposals. I know we have the DARPA funding for the County Islands as well as the Crowes Landing
David, good evening. I just pretty much want a general update for the public, if you could give just a small summary.
Sure.
And then just.
Here's the.
Where we're at on everything.
As I know it. Topeka Santa Fe bid out and engineer or the bids came in at 11% under engineer's estimate. That's really good news. Park Lawn is out to bid either next week or the week after. So that that's good. Colorado Warehouse, early to mid-June, will be out to bid. Bret Hart, mid-June. Turlock Sidewalk, we're bringing a board item to propose the board award that project on 6-3. Valley Homes out right now for bidding and Crowes Landing Industrial Business Park hit the street today. So it advertised today for for our water improvement project out there. So staff's been busy. I've been cranky. It's a it's been a lot of fun at public work, so.
Did you say, I didn't hear Riverdale in there, did I?
You know, it's it's a little bit further out, Terry, because we did have to do that redesign work where we took some stuff out. So I think it would be probably beginning of July-ish is I think what I recall staff saying.
Sorry, Chance, and just real quick.
No, good.
The waters coming from San Antonio, where do we stand with self-help for that? I wonder what the latest is.
I know they're they're getting really close. I was talking to Will about it. What did he say?
Okay, that's okay. We'll talk afterwards.
Okay, sounds good.
And then I, obviously, my colleagues can hone in on their two areas, but if I could just get the specific specifics for Area 10 and 24. So when do we plan on construction starting? I know we're going out to bid very soon.
Right.
Which is exciting. When do you anticipate construction starting in the South Modesto area?
It would be 90 days past our bidding out. So I would look for, construction starts sometime in September, October.
That's great. Okay.
For Wallace Worth, my bones tell me it's going to be a dry winter. I'm optimistic this year. If it's wet, we're we're, I know it's going to look like airport did. We had a year where we were doing airport improvements and it was a swamp out there for a few weeks. So you can't do underground work in the rain without making a mess. So hopefully, for our sake, you know, we we get a little, not so much rain this year.
And I know we have some challenges as far as annexation for Area 10, being that I guess the state requires that things have to be contiguous. You can't do a piecemeal of annexations. But on Area 24, are you at all optimistic that we can start engaging the city of Modesto about a possible annexation since I believe we're going to get 100% of those neighborhoods with gutters, sidewalks, street lighting, so so on and so forth to city standard? Are you confident at all that we could possibly start entertaining at least conversations about annexation with the city of Modesto for Area 24, Park Lawn?
I think it's my it's my understanding the CEO's office will be leading the charge of the annexation efforts. And it'll, I think it'll it'll take some some effort to get there. Public Works is glad to support, however we can in that effort, so.
Okay. If just at all possible, and this is something I can continue conversing with the CEO's office, we have anticipation finishing construction at the end of 2026. It would be nice to just, if we're allowed, if we're able to, to seamlessly transition into those annexation talks. So maybe that's something we can do consistently throughout the process and just because we know how how strenuous the LAFGO process is going to be. So it'd just be nice to start those conversations now in anticipation because, again, Area 24, it looks like we can potentially get 100% of that, those neighborhoods done with curves, gutters, sidewalks, lighting, so on and so forth, those amenities needed in order to entertain annexation by the city of Modesto, so.
County public work staff has been coordinating with the city engineer's office. That's Toby. So we've been we've been coordinating back and forth, so. But I think at some point, it's going to be the body political that has these conversations. And it did take us a while to get Shackelford annexed. That was about a decade-long effort, if you remember. And no, not all of us were there and I just came in on the tail end of that effort, but it was constructed for eight years before we got it annexed. So just some some, takes a while sometimes.
Even more reason to start those conversations sooner than later is, I guess, my point. You exactly proved my point very well, so thank you. And then on the Crowes Landing Air Base, we've gone out to bid on that. When do we plan on starting to see some dirt turning over out there?
That would again be about 90 days, maybe a little bit longer for that one. That one has, we were just talking about it today, it's going to sound mildly esoteric, there's submittals. And there's a bunch of equipment we're buying on that. It'll take us months to go through all the submittals that the contractor's going to do, and they could choose to do the underground construction after we get all the submittals approved. It may not turn dirt till next year. We've got a good plan for suspending all the ARPA first and will be completely spent on the ARPA money way before the the limit of December 31st, 2026 for Crowes. But yeah, it may not, nothing may happen and we won't know until we see the contractor's schedule.
Okay.
Because they drive the schedule. They're the ones that bid it and they're going to come up with a schedule and and we'll find out once we've awarded a contract.
Got it. Well, David, thank you so much. Thank you to your department for all their hard work and just appreciate the info.
Right. Thank you very much.
Dave, hold on a second. That 11% under the engineer's estimate, are you starting to see that across the board on all public work projects?
Hmm, the, as you're aware, the bids on NCC came in really favorably. That was that was good for us. A little bit? I think it depends on what we're we're putting out to bid. Hills Ferry came in really close to the Hills Ferry Bridge over the San Joaquin River, came in really close. I think this works and be very competitive. There's a lot of contractors that do this kind of work underground and paving. And so I think, just personal opinion, not based on anything else, I think we're going to continue to see some good bids because I think people like knowing that they got something for their crews to do for the next year or two. I think that that gives everybody some peace of mind because things are just, seem like they're a little bit up in the air right now.
Appreciate it, Dave.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
All right. Any others like to speak on C1? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a first.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
All right. Next up, public hearing, presentation of the sheriff's office, 2024 Report on Immigration and Customs Enforcement Access and Hold a Community Form pursuant to Government Code Section 7283.1. The sheriff.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We are back a little earlier this year. I believe it was Supervisor Kies's request. We did it November, December has kind of been our traditional month in his request. We were significantly earlier than that. So it has only been about five months or so since our 2023 update. And if you all will recall, this presentation covers the prior calendar year, so this is for 2024. Next slide. So as you are all aware, and I think everybody in the public is generally aware, anyone who is arrested in Stanislaus County gets booked at the Stanislaus County Jail, and that is the only real place where we have any interaction whatsoever with ICE or specifically ERO enforcement removal operations. That's kind of the subset that handles picking folks up. And under California state law, under SB 54, we are allowed to cooperate with ICE when inmates meet specific criteria. And as you can follow on the flow chart here, which we've had, I think, in every presentation since I've been the sheriff, although it's kind of an updated visual of it, it kind of talks through that flow chart in order, when someone is booked, let me start there, when someone is booked, their fingerprints are entered into the system digitally and ICE contacts us if they want to place a detainer or a hold on an individual. We do not proactively contact them. And for us to place that detainer, we first check and see if they have a prior conviction that meets the SB 54 criteria. And those criteria consist of two separate lists, serious and violent felonies, so a list of serious ones and violent ones, murder, rape, robbery. And those criteria consist of two separate lists, serious and violent felonies, so a list of serious ones and violent ones, murder, rape, robbery, et cetera, top both of those lists. There's forty-two on one, thirty on the other. But when you aggregate those lists, there's about fifty total felony violations that would allow us to place a detainer. And I believe that list is actually in the agenda item that is available for the board or the public. And I believe Mr. Mataka is the one who brought that up at the prior presentation, and so that's included in there. So but if they have a prior conviction, then we can place that detainer and we can turn them over to ICE within 365 days of their release date. So if someone is sentenced to 180 days in county jail, ICE can come and get them on the first day or the 180th day. They cannot come and get them on the 181st day because we will not have them in our custody any longer, and we do not hold them for ICE. They can only get them while they are in our custody. If someone does not have a prior conviction that meets that list, but their current charges meet that criteria, then we can place a temporary hold on them, although they still have the right to make bail or be otherwise released. If they are subsequently convicted or held to answer for that charge, we could ultimately turn them over to ICE on a detainer when they are are convicted. And if the answer to that is no, they don't have any prior convictions or current charges that meet the criteria, then we don't place a new detainer, and there's no no cooperation with ICE in any way, shape, or form. Next slide, bro. What you can see here, and I realize that this is difficult for members of the public. This is just a summary of of the all of the detainers and turnovers that we've had from 2018 through 2023. In those six years, as you can see, there were 1,167 detainers requested. We placed 682, meaning that they met those criteria. And of those, 107 were released to ICE. And that was mostly in the early years of this timeframe up here. Next slide, bro. The numbers up here are representative of twenty or not representative, they are all-inclusive of 2024. You can see that 112 detainers were requested. Eighty-seven of those individuals met the criteria for the detainer to be placed under California state law, and ICE picked up exactly zero of them. And that has been the trend in the prior four years of the prior four years, not the six that were up there a minute ago. They picked up one inmate in four years. That is what the that stat is. Next slide. This is just a quick cat general categorization of the crimes that qualify under SB 54. This is not all-inclusive, certainly, like I said, that list is included in your board agenda items. And so you can review that there. And that really concludes the formal portion of the presentation. A couple of things to put on everyone's radar, both for the board and for the community, is that obviously we have a new federal administration in office, and we have already seen this change. In 2025 now, we have already turned over six inmates to ICE that meet the state criteria under SB 54. The last one was in March, March 12th or 15th, I don't recall the exact date, so it's been a couple of months. We currently have eighteen individuals in our custody who do meet that criteria that could be turned over. Whether ICE comes and gets them or not is is up to them. We have no say in that matter. That is on their on their timeline and their their workload. So but the at the end of this year, I do expect that we will see that number continue to go up with ICE picking up individuals. The other notable thing that we expect to see happen in the near future is an increase in federal judicial warrants related to immigration. A detainer is not a judicial warrant, meaning that a judge has not signed that warrant. It is more of an administrative process. It is legal, but it is an administrative process, and state law prohibits us from arresting on that solely. Again, we can turn them over if they meet the criteria. However, we expect that the federal government will pursue judicial warrants to a fairly significant level. And that is a warrant, then that is signed by a judge. It is a federal arrest warrant, and we can and potentially will arrest on a federal warrant, just like we would for any other federal charge. While we are not federal agents, we do not have federal arrest authority in terms of specific law violations. We can arrest on a federal warrant. And then there's a process that goes through that goes through the courts in order for them to be actually turned over to the federal government from our custody related to that. And so we do expect that those will hit. The last word that we were given from the AUSA's office, the Assistant U.S. Attorney's Office, is that they were pursuing 700 federal judicial warrants that would be within the Eastern District of the State of California, which incorporates or encompasses the kind of 34 counties, more or less north of Kern County, kind of excluding the Bay Area, but the kind of the rest of the Northern California counties. And so in the Eastern District, it was 700 warrants that they were looking for, specific to that criteria. So those are the two things that I expect to have happen, while one is an increase in ICE picking them up from our custody under state law, and then the increase in the judicial warrants. And with that, that concludes my presentation, pending any of your questions.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Do you expect the are you expected to go out when you get a judicial warrant as a law enforcement agency? Or do they go out and locate the folks?
Yeah, they would go locate them. Where where I see this coming into play is we do, you know, a routine traffic stop. It comes back with a warrant. That warrant comes back as a federal immigration warrant. But and we've actually had to put out to our staff to make sure that depending on the hit, we actually have to review what it is to make sure it's not a detainer, because we cannot arrest under that. But if it's an actual federal warrant, we've sent out the examples of what they look like and so on. And so, yes, we could arrest on that. But it would be, to your question, it's going to be in that chance encounter or that random encounter. We do not participate in immigration enforcement operations whatsoever. And I actually spoke about that back in December, where my concern will come is that if ICE is in our community and, you know, doing a a federal enforcement operation, if they come across either a state law violation or there's a threat to the community, you know, if someone were to run from them, we would respond to assist them for that, either a state law violation or that threat to the community. And I think it's just that I spoke about it then, in case it ever happens, that that is different than us participating in immigration enforcement. There there's a nuanced difference there, but it is a critical difference.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I'm going to go ahead and open up a public hearing. Anyone that would like to make public comment on this agenda item, please?
Good afternoon, Noe Potomac, I'm with California Rural Legal Assistance Foundation. We're a statewide nonprofit legal services organization, and I appreciate the sheriff's presentation. I was surprised to see that there were zero, when I looked at the agenda item, zero detained and released to ICE. That just showed how much we progressed in the community in trusting law enforcement, all the law enforcements in the county. Now, the recent comments he's saying really brings up issues that we have to be diligent with, and that's with two areas. And that's one, the trust of law enforcement. So I appreciate the sheriff saying that they're not entangling with ICE, but he's also outlining where they can be prospectively. And we still don't know for sure how these judicial, federal judicial warrants will play out. We know that there's exceptions in the law, SB 54, so the Values Act, the Trust Act, and how they all interconnect. Now, one of the things we're hearing is those numbers have gone up now. So what that relates is when you have to deal with the community, the community wants to trust law enforcement. They feel that they also have to have public safety in their community, protect their families. Our clients are concerned about fear of detention, deportation, and separation of families. So that's what we want to to protect and safeguard. Already, our immigrant communities up and down the valley fear these deportations and concerns that their family will be separated. They already have issues with labor and housing violations because they don't have immigration status. They're also limited on public health and mental health access and services. They're being stressed out now with what is happening. Our farm workers in our community, Stanislaus County, there's about 26,000 farm workers. About 50 to 70% of them are undocumented. And just a a note, I know you emphasized agriculture and the comments that were made earlier. But for the board members and the agricultural community, what's at stake? And if you these start taking out, deporting our farm workers, immigrant farm workers, you're talking about $70 million that goes as subsidies to the ag industry for them not providing health insurance. So medical right now is the primary driver for our farm workers. And if that was to go away, then you're talking about ag, will they put up $76 million in this county to cover that? Of course, a portion of that is those who are documented, okay? But if you say 50%, you're still looking at $35 million that ag would have to pick up to insure the the workers. So there's a lot at stake coming here in our community as it relates to immigration, how it integrates. With that, that's my comment, but I had a couple of questions. I think the sheriff addressed a few of them. But if I may, on January 17th, 2025, the Office of Attorney General issued a information bulletin or guidance to all local law enforcement agencies. And that essentially would just updating the law. And so my question would be whether the sheriff's office has integrated that bulletin and into any of their policies protect, policies, procedures, and training materials that are in writing. The sheriff referenced that he they talked to the staff about how they're going to proceed. So any of that that's in writing that would be accessed by the board and available to the public would be helpful. And secondly, thank you for the information. That was my second question is, since now we're like six months into the year, what is the current status of of these connections with ICE and communications? So those are my comments and my questions. I leave that for the board, and if the sheriff wants to follow up to those, I appreciate that. So thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you for your comments.
Jeff, can I ask you another question? On the 700 you said in the northern 34 counties, more or less?
Yeah.
Those are for, do those people have crimes they've committed, or they're not just undocumented individuals?
I do not know the answer to that. It they are simply, my understanding is that they they were specifically federal warrants related to immigration, but they are signed by a judge, which just categorically changes them completely in that they were a federal arrest warrant as opposed to a detainer. Do if they have other associated crimes that you'll put them on the radar? I I can't answer that. I don't, without having a name and knowing what a criminal history is, I just, I don't know.
It it seems it puts you and your deputies in the police departments in an awful position when, you know, when you're checking the warrants and it puts the liability on on us as a county. And
Yes.
Anyways, we'll have to ferret this out together for sure.
Yeah, I mean, I've said this very publicly on a number of occasions, that this particular topic, I think, unfortunately, puts local law enforcement in the crossfire of of policy between the state and the federal government. And it kind of puts us in a place that we have no statutory role, really, in any of the, you know, in any federal law violation enforcement. We're not federal agents. But this this is a very difficult one that we have to navigate.
Appreciate all you do and that you bring your lovely wife, a date night, to a nighttime board of supervisors.
Thank you, Sheriff. John, John X. Mataka, you had filled out a card to want to speak in this this item. I wasn't going to forget you this time.
Yeah, John X. Mataka, Grayson Neighborhood Council, Valley Improvement Project. Well, thank you, Sheriff, for the for the report, and thank you for adding the the crimes that allow people to be picked up for. I appreciate that. You know, this doesn't surprise me, the the report where the sheriff says that already this year, six people, you know, have have been picked up. Because we all knew with the new administration that that that's what he ran on, and that we knew that that was going to be a a hot issue. The issue, my concern is the issue with the federal warrants, because even locally, some people contacted us about a question about an I supposedly ICE official coming to the house with no identification and a supposedly warrant that nobody really saw. And, you know, like the sheriff mentioned, the the main one, it has to be a judicial warrant signed by a judge. The other one, I forget the name of it, but the one that's not signed by a judge doesn't work. That's not valid. It has to be signed by a judge. So I'm really curious as to those 700 people in the in the western region or whatever the the region is that have these judicial warrants. You know, what, you know, and I don't know how we'd find that out, but what, how are they able to get those warrants? You know, and how are the local officers, they all they're going to know is that there's a judicial warrant for this person. So they're obligated by law, from what I'm hearing, to arrest them and notify the feds. But they're not going to really know if that is a legit, I'm just saying, a legit federal warrant or not, unless they see that that warrant and verify that there's a judge signature. And I guess that's that's my my concern, because, you know, it's like me going to the bank, you know, I could sign Bianca Lopez on it, and I'm not Bianca Lopez. So that would be my concern, is is having some way of verifying that those federal warrants that you're picking somebody up in this county for actually were signed by a federal judge. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, John. Any others like to speak on this agenda item? Bianca?
Bianca Lopez, Valley Improvement Projects. I don't trust anything the sheriff says. Not that those numbers are incorrect or anything, but I come with distrust because I hear the concerns and the stories from community members. And we know that it is not just people who are criminals or have a criminal record who are being picked up by ICE or who have been picked up by ICE. Especially from coming from a presentation from the sheriff, Dirxy, who was responsible for beating up an individual in Patterson and then saying and then making sure that he was actually flee the country. Knowing his stance and his actions in the past, I don't have trust, which is another reason why civilian review boards are really important because we can actually look at the data and information to feel comfortable and to trust these numbers. Sheriff Dirxy is also the one who just recently attended the Farm Bureau meeting in, I believe, April and introduced himself as, hi, I'm Sheriff Dirxy, I arrest your workforce. Very insensitive, and that kind of just tells me what kind of person he is, not just because he has a badge and he's a cop, but because of the way he presents himself and how he has behaved in the past. I have a question, maybe like a scenario that I'd like to understand if this falls under SB 54. If I have a if I have previously been convicted of one of these charges, but I'm now on probation, and the sheriff comes to my home and ransacks my home and detains my children for hours, and then three days later, my husband or I get detained. Is that a violation of the law of SB 54? How is it a coincidence that three days after the sheriff department comes to violate my family, ICE comes to pick me up? That's one of the stories that we've heard already this year. But I do, I would like an answer to that scenario. Is that something that the sheriff is responsible for when they come to ransack my house because I'm on probation for one of these crimes? Does the sheriff have the ability? Does the sheriff have the ability and the power to communicate with ICE and give them my local address to come to my home to detain me? That's an actual scenario, and I would like to know if that's within their legal boundaries. I have another question about the 18 individuals in custody. Does ICE contact the sheriff, but the sheriff never says, "Hey, these people are in the jail and they fit the description"? Another question. Thank you.
Thank you, Bianca. Sheriff D.
Well, I'll go with the second one first. I already explained that when someone is arrested, their fingerprints are digitally uploaded and ICE contacts us. We do not contact ICE over anybody who might fit the profile as it is, as it was stated. So we don't do that. I can't speak to a hypothetical because I'm unaware of whatever that scenario is that she presented. So no, I can't answer that. But I will say that we do not contact ICE and, you know, give them information about, hey, here's somebody that you might want to go look at. So that's what it is.
Thank you, Sheriff. Any others like to speak on this item?
Hello, my name is Manuela. So my question is, as we have seen what ICE has been doing all throughout the country, they are kidnapping people, trafficking people across state lines to detention centers, sending them to concentration camps in El Salvador. And regardless if someone has something that they've done that is a crime or whatever, we've also been seeing U.S. citizens. And because ICE has been masking themselves, when people ask for identification, they are not providing any identification. They are, again, they have to have a signed warrant by the judge. And as we heard earlier, like, how can we even trust that? How are the sheriff going to, let's say they get these federal, whatever he was talking about, saying, oh, these people, we got to go, ICE says that we need to go get these people. How do we even verify that, like we were saying earlier, that any crime has been committed? But how do we also know that they're just not going after someone because they've been at a protest? Because that's been happening. Mahmoud Khalil, he's in jail right now or in ICE detention. So what kind of, how is he going to, how are the sheriffs going to protect the community? That's my question. Because I don't feel protected. I don't feel safe at all. Regardless if, whether you're a citizen or not, are they just going to go hand in hand with whatever it says? Or are they going to actually question what is being handed to them? So I could answer that.
Thank you. Any others like to speak on this agenda item?
I would.
Hold on. Brian, we got people coming out of the back. They were up before you.
Good evening and hello, everybody, once again. I would say that, it's more of a comment, you know, we're talking about the history of the sheriffs out here in Stanislaus County. I remember family members of mine in the 1980s came down to Patterson to visit, and they got deported just walking down the street, not being criminals, but being an immigrant or a person with non-citizenship makes you a criminal, hands down. Because you're here without citizenship, right? Even back, back in the 80s, early 80s. And the sheriffs were always known to be heavy-handed, right? You know, lawmakers were in bed with the farmers and the sheriffs were just the hired muscle to get things done. They would celebrate the cowboy history and say, hey, you know, we're going to remember how we were back in the Wild West days, not knowing that wearing the boots and all that other stuff, that came from the vaqueros, that came from the Mexicans, that came from the Native Americans, that came from some blacks. They were the first cowboys, way before anybody else. And so my comment would be is just how can we really believe and trust that the sheriffs here in Stanislaus County are not working or having any communication with ICE deporting people just on citizenship alone? Just on the threat that there are people of color working? Because when people go to the fruit, you know, aisle in their local grocery store and get an apple or get a vegetable, they don't say, oh, an immigrant, an undocumented criminal picked this for me during the harvest season. They enjoy their salad. They enjoy their fruits and vegetables, the apricots, their asparagus, so on and so forth. And they don't say, oh, the dirty hand of somebody who was an immigrant picked this out. They eat it and enjoy it, right? The ag, big ag here in the Central Valley enjoys the money that comes in, enjoys being the fourth largest economy in the world, even beyond Japan. We just surpassed Japan. But the people who do the hard work are just criminals. They're immigrants, they're minorities. There's an unbalance of morals here. And there needs to be some checks and balances because how can only things be one-sided and only one group is demified and Comcasted that you're the enemy, you're the problem, we're the righteous ones? Nobody's perfect, but how can accountability be a one-way street? And I think the sheriffs need to have accountability. There's been people who've spoken out against Del Porto Canyon with Elias Funes, and they've been under threat by the sheriffs. They've lost their jobs, right? And just because you have a badge or you're upholding the law doesn't mean you're above the law. Doesn't mean that you're somehow a person who can bully other people because you've got power over other people. People also have the power of free will to come here and say, hey, as a taxpayer, as a citizen, this is what I think. And there's something called quiet professionalism. For those of us who are educators or wore the uniform for a government agency, I don't need a compliment or pat on the back all the time for all the stuff that I do, even though I wore a uniform. And that's what I kind of see is the difference is there's people that have ego, their leadership, toxic leadership, and there's people that are not looking for publicity. And I think that that's something that the law enforcement needs to be more held accountable. We need to hear more issues about, is there therapists on hand where some of them can go get seen for their PTSD? Is there those resources? And why is it that our, our community is constantly under attack by everybody? But yet with the industry and the money that are coming in, everybody benefits from that, right? And I just, I think that that's just disgusting. That's immorally incorrect, and that's just very hypocritical. People's moral compass is really messed up. And I just kind of feel that that needs to, there needs to be some sort of acknowledgement of that, how we went from a sanctuary state, right? Sanctuary place, but there's also American citizens, they're criminals, they do criminal things, they go into our schools and harm kids and do shootings. And where's that? Where are those stats? When it doesn't fit the narrative or people's rhetoric, people don't want to bring up other issues. But when it's popular, it's trending, and if it's their rhetoric, they'll bring it up. There's an unbalance here. That also needs to be acknowledged. Criminality is a human thing. It's not an immigrant thing. It's not a minority thing. It's a human problem. That's all I wanted to say.
Any others like to speak on this agenda item? Mr. Evans, come on up.
Now, when Chavez was here and the sheriffs were there protecting him and our farmworkers when they were on strike, the sheriff did protect. My dad was one of them that protected them there. They came over on work visas, they came and performed their job, they had families here and they had families back in Mexico. We're not really looking at this federal government that, oh, all of them are bad. They're looking at the ones that do commit crimes. And that's where we have to kind of join in because we're not a sanctuary state. It doesn't really matter. We're people. We're all the same. We're trying to do it. We voted in this country, and we can see where the votes wound up. We want the protection. We want the border just like any other country. We just want people to come over here that can educate themselves and become better people. And the same thing, sheriff, he's going to be a better person during this whole thing because he's going to have to learn the same thing. We're not going to stay a sanctuary state, no matter what. But yet we do have to protect the constitutional rights of the people because they are people. And they have feelings and they have directions that they want to live in, they have family and friends. But the thing is, if they broke the law, he should be able to be free to say, this man's committed multiple felonies, he's always wanted, and why should us taxpayers in the area support that man in our jails? Give him to ICE. Let the federal government support him. Let him take care of that, you know? But otherwise, come over with a work visa, come over with an educational visa, come over and just say that you want to come and take a vacation and enjoy our country. Show us that you're honest and everything, and you're going to learn. Just like back then, Chavez. They, they came and then they went back. They wanted to work here, they made families here, they still wanted a house over in Mexico. That's just fine, you know, the way I see it. But if they're going to commit crimes here, then no, we don't want them. And we don't want to support them in our, our county. Why would we want to support somebody the federal government wants? So I just see it that it'll work out as long as we keep the constitutional rule that we're human beings, look at them all the same way. And that's the training that you guys need to do with your officers. And you need to turn around and really.
Mr. Evans, address the dais, please. Don't, don't look back at the sheriff.
It's on the microphone, but yet he's one of our employees, elected officials too. And, you know, he could be up there just as well as you guys because he is an elected official. And sometimes we have to look back here for our answers because all we can do is comment with you. And these are the people that can answer it, the ones that work for us. So anyway, that's what I see. And I see that, you know, if they're good citizens, treat them like good citizens, give them all the respect they need constitutionally, and protect us from the cities and the police departments that don't protect us. When they take and intake somebody into a jail, make sure there's facts and that this man turns around and he knows the facts of it without just taking it in arbitrarily. Because otherwise, we just have anarchy. We got to get away from anarchy. We already have enough that going on right now. We don't need to fall into that pit. So let's work hard, you guys. Let's change things for the better for all people. Let's make our nation strong.
Sheriff, you've got a racist.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any others like to speak on this regard?
Good evening. My name is Alyssa. I'm from, my family's from Modesto, but I'm a San Joaquin County resident. So I'm going to address San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors as well. But I wanted to stand in solidarity with Bianca and the team for pushing for an accountability board. From what I'm hearing is that Sheriff Woodrow from San Joaquin County is related to one of y'all. And it's been stated that San Joaquin County, and I don't know about Stanislaus County, I'll catch up, but you guys are not complying with ICE. But yet there was a recent task force in San Joaquin County where they were pulling and profiling people over based off the contingency of if they were part of sideshows. So basically, they were like pulling over any car that like looked like it can go to a sideshow and then pulling people over for no reason. And then somebody was asked for their immigration status. I just, I bring that in scenario up because you guys work directly with our county as well. But also, like, I did a public comment about this at Stockton City Council as well because, you know, just for accountability for you guys to make sure that you guys have everything on the papers, right? That you say, like, you claim like your name, your numbers are, they have accuracy, and yet community members are saying otherwise. So yeah, so I would just support an accountability boards and then also consistent communications with stakeholders that you guys work with. It's disappointing to see actors vouch and work with 209 Times, who is disinformation and who is under investigation by the DOJ. And so, you know, I, no offense, I don't really have faith in you, but as this whole Central Valley is being investigated because of 209 Times, I hope you did the right thing.
Thank you for your comments. Any others like to speak on this regard? Yet, Sir Yari spoke once on this.
I just want to add a point, a clarifying point, if I may. I mentioned the Office of Attorney General's guidance that was provided in January, and that went to all local law enforcement. And since the comment was addressed to task forces, in this guidance, it says if an agency, policy, or local law, or policy permit, a California law enforcement agency has discretion but is not required to perform the following immigration enforcement activities. And it says, participate in a joint law enforcement task force, including sharing of confidential information with task force participants if all the following conditions are met. The task force's primary person, purpose is not immigration enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
You want to open or close the meeting first?
Yeah, let's.
I'll be real brief. It's just, Mr. Gonzalez from Patterson. I just be, have a concern enforcing, you know, going by the, the legal status where we're our local law enforcement has communication with ICE to enforce, you know, detainment or whatever. What this is going to cost to the community, since we're, our population is Hispanic, Latino immigrants, some are not resident status, right? But we still rely on them. Like we said, they, you know, they're the agriculture treasure for California, for our community. Let's say, for instance, this immigrant undocumented community has to report a crime, okay? When we have a pattern of law enforcement having communication with federal government, how are they going to trust our local enforcements to, you know, to, to report a crime that's being committed against them? So what's going to happen is there's going to be a lot of advantages from the citizen part community and the non-citizen part community. And they're going to take advantage of those gaps because we're communicated to federal government. And that's a big concern. It starts from a little bit, and then it starts growing. And you start seeing, you know, less reporting of crimes, more crimes committed against our immigrants, you know, more fear for our community. We don't want that to happen. Just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you. Any others? All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for any further comment.
Yeah, I just want to first, yeah, my, that's my little brother, who's the sheriff in San Joaquin County. And he's just doing a great job and very much respecting. I think he's very much respected in what he's doing there. And I think the same for our sheriff. He's, he's very much respecting the job he's doing and doing the right thing. And I appreciate this report. It seems like we've had a whole bunch of different scenarios that have been proposed here. But I think if we listen to what the sheriff said and, and what he's doing under the law and what he's not doing is, answers a lot of the questions that the people came up and talked about today. So I appreciate the report. Very well done. I'm sorry, Jeff, you're still my favorite sheriff in the world up there. But that's blood. Sorry, that's thicker than.
So I would say the same. Today, we're receiving a report, the statistics, you've been very consistent about not engaging with ICE inside the jail. It's through the fingerprinting process that gets you, or gets the contact with ICE or how they get the information. So I, I trust the job your folks are doing inside the jail. You know, there's, there's real concerns if you're an immigrant in this situation now. I have no doubt that there is some concerns. That's not what we're talking about here tonight. We're talking about the communications and accepting this report. Again, I think, you know, being a deputy is a tough job, being a police officer is a tough job. And it won't get any easier with what you're going to have to deal with potentially here in the future. So I, again, I think we continue to try and build trust within the community. That's all of law enforcement. And I, I think we'll, we'll be better off. I, I really do.
Any others? Sheriff Brooke, thank you for your presentation. Great information. Just appreciate the, the good job all the deputies are doing out there and keeping us safe and you providing the information. Thank you. All right, well, motion, needs to motion for a, the acceptance of the report.
I will make a motion to accept the sheriff's report.
Second.
I got a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. All right, moving on. No discussion items, no correspondence, board of supervisor reports.
I do have just a quick report. We conducted a community cleanup in Grayson over the weekend. Want to thank all the volunteers who showed up and assisted in. Want to thank all the volunteers who showed up and assisted in that. We filled eight bins total, and specifically want to give a shout out to the West Stanislaus Fire Department. We had, we had an explorer on hand who volunteered their time in assisting in the cleanup efforts. Beyond that, I do want to just give a short update regarding Diablo Grande. Obviously, the June 30th deadline is still, you know, looming regarding the water termination. I do want to thank Supervisor Withrow for, for joining myself on numerous calls regarding that and other irrigation districts, and trying to collaborate and come up with some sort of solution. I was recently able to convene a second follow-up meeting with Governor Newsom's office regarding the matter. They're discussing possible solutions or their role internally. What we plainly requested from the governor's office is that he potentially weigh in on the matter by simply submitting a letter to Kern requesting a minimum 12-month extension so that we here locally can work and collaboratively with the west, western area, west, Western Hills Irrigation District, thank you, Terry, and trying to come up with either a shorter or long-term solution to this. Again, it hasn't been an easy venture by any means, and I do want to thank all of the county staff and their attention on this matter. And we're just gonna keep trying to find options and alternatives and just see what we can come up with, but time is of the essence, and, and, you know, we're just gonna be very mindful of the urgency. So, again, thank you.
Any others?
So, there was a lot of exciting things. I was just going through pictures, since I'm doing any posts, I'm too lazy, but it was great. Supervisor Withrow, Supervisor Graywall, and I attended the Latino Chamber and the Legacy Award, went to, you know, to Doug Ridenhour and Jenny Canoyer, and it was like one of the sweetest speeches. I had a smile on my face the whole time as Doug was talking about Jenny really being a leader, and beyond that, like, forceful in her views and then becoming the best of friends, it was something. They also had the opening of the, I went to the opening of the pool, I wanted to say Benita Pool, it's the, oh my lordy, Columbia Park Pool in Turlock, a beautiful pool, huge, and it, it's been a long time coming, much like Benita Park Pool, it just opened, it was terrific, lots of kids swimming, it was the day that was kind of overcast, didn't stop kids from swimming at all, having a nice, safe opportunity to get together. And then, I wanted to shout out really quickly to Francisco Velasquez, one of our workers who became a U.S. citizen a couple Fridays ago. We went out to dinner on Friday, the whole Chiaza Ranch family. That's the one post I did do, because I'm, I'm so proud of, trying to get through the immigration system in the United States is impossible, and, and so, I feel sorry for immigrants who are trying to do the right thing. I think it took them about seven years to get through the system, but a new U.S. citizen.
Congratulations, that's awesome.
And I think he told me he would never vote for me.
And you did, you did post that.
Yes, I did, that's the one thing I posted, because I, it warmed my heart.
Any others?
Otherwise, I'm just gonna give a quick public safety announcement. The fire season is here already. If you haven't read some of the emails that have come through on updates from MST ripping off 30, 40, 50 acres at a time, and it's happening all over the county. If you have a chance, start cleaning up, make defensible spaces around your structures, clean out your gutters. Embers can travel over a mile in that smoke plume, they can land anywhere, and then they just look for opportunities to start that fire again. So, make sure you start cleaning up around your houses and, and don't be sorry later. Yeah, all right. Legislative Fiscal Management report.
Okay, thank you. I think, as you're aware, the governor's made budget revision was released last week, and the headlines are that there are proposals that impact nearly $12 billion in actions that are necessary to close a projected deficit at the state level, as well as balancing out existing and future reserves. I was fortunate enough to join a briefing with the Director of the State's Department of Finance just last Friday, and got to hear kind of directly from the top in terms of how the state was viewing the budget. Their challenges are clearly driven by, by growth in many of their program cost areas. Medical, most specifically, I think, was the, the area of program growth that was mentioned the most as a cost driver at the state level, also combined just with the current state of the economy, including lower job growth throughout the state, and overall expected negative trends in revenue. So, that's kind of the general theme, but I think one of the more concerning things as part of the conversation for my takeaway was that the projections for out in the future actually demonstrate significant imbalances in the budget going forward. So, when you look at our long-range modeling as, as we do here at each one of our budget updates, their long-range modeling is, is not looking very good at the state level, and you can expect that means that, that what you're seeing in this, this particular budget proposal is just probably the start of more reductions that will come in other areas. So, our team is obviously closely monitoring what we've seen in the May revised budget and any additional conversations that would happen at the state level. I do want to identify and just mention a couple of things that we saw right away that our departments identified and brought to our attention. I think the clearest impacts in the state budget relate to the programs that rely on Medical coverage and associated reimbursements. So, these issues are, impact multiple departments on the administrative and program side, but most notably, Community Services Agency, Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, and our Health Services Agency. Other significant concerns would be the absence of funding for the Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention Program, or what we call HAP funds. Those are currently used to support the majority of costs at the Salvation Army ACIS shelter, so it's direct impact to our shelter support and operations. I think this issue's gonna get a lot of attention throughout the budget process, because it impacts shelter operations and other homeless services throughout the entire state. We've also noticed some decreased funding for programs that support children and families with Child Welfare Services, our probation department, and the Health Services Agency. We're still early in this process. Also want to note that negotiations, the budget negotiations that are occurring at the federal level, which seems to be changing by the day or by the hour as you read those news reports from back in DC, very hard to predict where all of that lands. One last final note that's important is that the governor's budget proposal does not include any additional reductions at the federal level, so they're kind of assuming probably some rosy assumptions in the state's budget as it relates to potential federal impacts. So, whatever we're seeing in the state's budget, if there are reductions at the federal level, it's going to compound what you're seeing at the state level, and I think everybody's bracing for that in some way. So, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Sergeant Karanza, thank you for your overwatch, and this meeting is adjourned.